I'd like to go ahead and counsel it ago. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting. Follow me, just that way.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with the Lord, liberty and justice for all.
If you don't mind, some of the agenda.
Yes, Father, we're coming for you right now. Asking you for your guidance and your peace, Father, and let us know if we get what took place 24 years ago that we always remember, but we thank you that because we're still standing. We ask you to do with wisdom to make the decision best for your people in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yes. I'd like to take a moment here. Silence is to respect all the people that involved in 9/11 and first responders. Everybody involved, very critical thing. So, I understand there might be little things happening on Park at 6 o'clock. Todd Park comes to this meeting to come, so that can mean that transit had their thing around, but I just like a moment of silence for those people, everybody involved. Thank you. Everybody's here. Posting an agenda.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion on posting of the agenda, please.
Um, sir, if you would say in all favor, say aye. Uh, aye, aye, I oppose, must be carried. Moving on to item number two.
Yes, Your Honor, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you. This has been a very busy day for the City Council. We had a study session at 1:00 and then, um, added this special meeting too today. Um, so thank you for your time as we discuss the municipal services review prepared by LAPCO for the Calabriti Healthcare District. If you'll recall, the city specifically requested that LAPCO conduct this MSR and prepare this report. We wrote a letter to them in May after hearing some concerning information from citizens related to the financial state of the Calabriti Healthcare District. Um, LAPCO in June, um, the N S O voted to conduct this municipal services review. And, um, the MSR states that the overall goal to achieve respect to the Calabriti Healthcare District and the Calabriti Hospital is a fully restored and operational hospital with financial stability for the long term. Ultimate goal to provide relevant information that provides options and potential actions that could be considered to resolve the financial situation and administrative issues that have plagued Calabriti Healthcare District for years, which has resulted in the financial crisis. Um, it further notes that the Calabriti Healthcare District is clearly unstable at this time and the short-term outlook is unknown as to the ability to meet the goals of the 60-day emergency plan that they implemented. Long-term outlook is also questionable unless sufficient long-term cash flow requirements for sustainability and eventual restoration of the suspended services can be achieved. Current projections for the end of fiscal year 2025 are estimated to be a negative $7,355,161. So, the MSR, um, and from what I understand, the Calabriti Healthcare District was fully compliant with LAPCO and their data request to conduct this municipal services review. And after the analysis, they have made the following options and recommendations. Option one is to continue with the implementation of their adopted recovery plan. That is the 60-day plan that the board implemented some time ago. Obtain state or county funding to restore solvency and restore all suspended services. Also, if you'll recall, currently, they are not admitting patients doing any surgery. Um, it is specifically emergency room services, radiology, and x-ray. Option three is obtaining commercial loan funding guaranteed by the state or county to restore solvency. Option four is lease the hospital to a public or private hospital. Option five is to form a joint powers authority with the healthcare district, city of life, and county. Option six, the city and county assume ownership and operation of the hospital and dissolve the Calabriti Healthcare District. Option seven, consolidate the Calabriti Healthcare District with the Desert Healthcare District and dissolve the Calabriti Healthcare District. And option eight is sell the hospital to a private provider and dissolve the Calabriti Hospital District. So, after these options were provided, the LAPCO CEO provided, and I think I'm missing an option, option nine was bankruptcy.
Correct.
And so, after review of all of the options, the LAPCO executive officer made his own opinions on those options. His preferred option is to combine option one and two, which is continuing with the 60-day recovery plan and then obtain state and county funding to help restore solvency. Option five is the JPA between the city and county. This option should be given strong consideration based on the LAPCO CEO's opinion. Option four would be to lease the hospital to a private or public provider. Option three would be obtained, to obtain loans guaranteed by the state or county to restore solvency. And this option should only be considered if the preferred options are discarded. And again, his preferred options are options one, two, five, and four. Option six, seven, and eight essentially dissolve the Calabriti Healthcare District and it would assign a successor agency or a commercial provider to restore those services. Although these are options, they are not his preferred options. And then option nine is bankruptcy, which is the worst-case scenario. If all other options fail, then the hospital would be forced to, um, look at bankruptcy. So, it's our understanding, or it's not our understanding. There is a public hearing with the LAPCO board on September 25th at 9:00 a.m. in Riverside. And in some conversations with some members of LAPCO, they are interested to hear the city's opinion on these options and potentially have the city provide a recommendation from the city for the record for their commission members. Again, the CEO is a staff member of LAPCO. He is going to present this report to his board, similar to I'm presenting it today to you. And they will be the ones that decide on the options they build at the hospital and the hospital board should undertake. Staff does have a recommendation, um, after being a part of the ad hoc committee, after attending a number of healthcare district board meetings. It's apparent that there is a breakout in trust between the current board and the community that continuing with the current board, um, there's a lack of transparency, there's a lack of trust, that, um, it would be staff's option that a new board be sworn in. And then we pursue options four or seven, which is funding from the state and county with new funding. Um, and options four or seven is either finding a private hospital provider to come in and take over the management of the hospital or, um, have another hospital system, like the Desert Healthcare District or someone else come in and restore the hospital to fully functional operating facility because, um, that is what this community needs. We need healthcare, we need to be able to admit patients, we need to be able to perform surgeries, be able to assist people in need instead of transporting them 100 miles across the desert in a helicopter or ambulance every time that there is an emergency. And that is the number-one goal of the LAPCO report is to restore those services. Um, it's been pretty unclear, um, I don't know if there's any hospital board members in the audience, I don't believe I saw any, um, that after the 60 days, what happens? What is their plan to get the hospital reopened to a fully functional facility? And, um, the vice mayor has been more involved than I have, and he can jump in if he has other information, but I'm just not seeing what happens at the end of 60 days. How do we get from here to back to where we were before the 60-day plan was implemented? Um, obviously, from all of the options, new funding is key to meet the goals of restoring the hospital to a fully functional facility. And just in conversations that we have, it's really unclear that as long as the current board is in place, that any funding will flow from the county or the state. So, the best thing for this community is to, um, have a new board that can restore some faith and trust, um, with the community and the hospital and its services, and then also with our elected officials to help assist with those funding requests that have already been made. Tonight, we are looking for, um, council to determine the best option or combination of options to present to LAPCO and to appoint a spokesperson on behalf of the city to make these public comments, um, at the LAPCO meeting on September 25th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Natalie. Board members have any comments?
Bill, I concur with the city manager's assessment. Um, we're in a hole, so it's not going to be easy to come out. It's going to take people of knowledge willing to make the decisions and not be, uh, be swayed by any personal relationships that can connect this story. And that's why I concur with her assessment that the current board needs to be resolved. It's not personal, it just look at the outcome. This, this downfall started 2000, heard the hospital, their own voice, this downfall started 2022, but without the care money that came in that year, they were the vulnerable. And then it's currently burning almost a million dollars a month. I don't see how with the current board, with their current management style, burning through almost a million dollars a month, will be giving the confidence to handle additional funds. Because those additional funds will just take care of debt, and then what after that? Continue to say management system, it'll just go right back to, in my view, go right back to workless. So, that's why it's, uh, I would recommend the options listed. And my hope is that the Calabriti District will take it. It's not a guarantee, they would have to be funded. And I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful of counting the fund that. I don't see any funds coming from the state, not for a long time. That's, that's a, be a high one in this current fiscal state. Those are my comments right there.
Johnny, have you, uh, since we're having this, before we had this meeting, have you had any contact with, uh, the other people involved at the meeting?
We've had, not in recent, within the last couple of weeks. Uh, I'll be honest, the meeting started to get repetitive and became unfootable. I think the, this firm is with me, he also could, to, would prefer that. And, uh, it just seems, we seem to be just going in circles because nothing represented how they're going to come out of the 60 days. My feeling is they're hoping for some state funding, uh, beginning of the 60 days in order to get, uh, through to the next part of this, which is still no plan.
Well, yesterday, I went to Riverside Transportation Meeting and talked to Manuel a little bit, he didn't get me. So, I've been talking to Manuel through the county, or how they're standing, or what do they, how do they think that this should proceed?
Uh, Mr. Howie, myself, had about a 20-minute Zoom meeting with something we was on Monday.
That's weird.
And, uh, it's my impression, with his perception, was the board needed to replace. Uh, all were some, he wanted to have more discussion out of it. Then the LAPCO, uh, report came out the next day, and we had not had discussions since then. But those were his personal thoughts at the time. And he had, as you know, he had met with the, uh, the CEO and one of the board members that were CFO early on with this discussions.
Your Honor, um, the county, however, outside of our supervisor, Manuel Perez, the county has several working, working groups that we discussed previously that have been started and meet weekly and I did now bi-weekly to discuss the situation at the hospital, how it goes forward. We've had conversations, uh, the vice mayor and I and our lobbyists with the county CEO, his staff, about how we move this forward. So, the county is very invested in this, they've been our partner in this. And I think that if we present to them the option that we think is the best path moving forward, that I am willing to bet that they would go along with our recommendation.
And the LAPCO report, you know, it says that the state and county will be able to step up, I understand this right, with some money and make this happen. Am I reading that correctly?
They're all options, it's not guaranteed, it's just, these are things, these are the options in front of us as ways to fix the financial crisis at the hospital. It's, it's not a guarantee, it's just that if you get some money from the state and the county, if you do this or you do that, you'll be able to fix the dire financial situation that's occurring currently.
Well, back when Graham had the hospital and when Ford, you know, took over the situation there, it all worked out quite fine. But going back, uh, on the reports, um, just picking some details about the county, the hospital district gives a percentage of the property tax and all that. And I think back in the day, it was two and a half percent is what they were supposed to be collecting or whatever, so I don't know where it's at today. I try and get that from Manuel where it was at and that they said I have. And then when I called the county office, they said they got to have it writing. And I mean, I just did that the past couple of days to see, you know, how much money the hospital is getting from the county because it comes in a different form of money, whether they, so much so happened, really reported, going back through some of the records. So, I'm just curious, you know, in that direction. But they're also stating in the LAPCO report that maybe forming another district or, you know, trying to get a thing passed to increase more taxes or what it takes to two-thirds to make that happen. There's a lot of things in this that, you know, that are unknown, and it's hard to, I'm just saying, it's a lot to it, so I just didn't know if you had any more conversation, Johnny, and, you know, moving aggressive. How long would it take to remove that board?
No, no, they'll never discuss with the, they'll never brought up how long, what the transition would be. But going back to your, your partial tax, I believe it's only six, it's under $700,000, $600,000 some thousand dollars a year.
Okay, well, it's not a partial tax, they get a percentage of all the tax, property, uh, structures, motor homes.
Yes, so they're a taxing entity, so they do receive tax funds that are collected for property taxes. However, they also do have a, a special assessment, a parcel tax. The LAPCO, there's a couple of, um, errors in the LAPCO report. I don't know if it's important to have them correct or not, et cetera, and no special assessment there is, although I believe it's under $300,000 a year that they receive. It also says the next closest hospital in Arizona is Quartzsite, which we know they meant Parker. So, there's a couple of things that are not accurately stated, um, but...
That, that should be fixed because Parker's all part of the Quartzsite.
As you went by Google search, it shows that, uh, there was a La Paz County Regional Medical Center version of care there, but now it's just a hybrid, so he probably wouldn't like that.
Can I say something real quick about, it sounds easy because when we look at it, we want to quick, but although there's some place to replace the board, or especially the X M or, or they get removed by the Johnson or whatever or anything, however, the people that were the sooner position to be the new board need to understand that their responsibility is going to be great because they're going to go into like combat. And it won't be like, well, you can't blame the other people, you have to assume the responsibility once you get in there. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there because sometimes people seem like, we get rid of the new board, we get rid of the old board, and we come in and it's a new board. But you still, we still have to make the decisions and take responsibility for it. It's decisions that are made along with what's already taken place, and we're assuming the same responsibility of the old board to try to get it out. I'm just, I just want to put that out there so don't think like, well, that was them, it wasn't us, it's you now. So, take that into consideration.
It's probably why we should look at seeing if the Death Care Network would scoop this up. They're professionals, they know how to run hospitals.
Right.
Our, I mean, I'll be honest with you, you know, I do my best here on council, but I wouldn't even try to take the crack at the hospital board. I don't know anything about hospitals or healthcare, you know, that's tough. And I don't know if there's really many people in this town that are qualified for that. And I can tell you this, the five that are on it, they may be at one time some of the boards, but they're not anymore. And, you know, it's time to go. And, uh, it, it speaks for volumes because you don't see any of them here. I mean, that's pretty bad. They're not here to defend themselves? That's all I need to see. That, that told me everything when I came in this room and didn't see one member from the hospital board here. I don't see their returning here.
Nope.
I don't know what's, that doesn't matter to me. Where are the board? You know, and that's, that's despicable and embarrassing, ridiculous. Yeah, replace them, that's what I said. And, and I hope you wrote it all down, until I said that.
So, to move forward with this, who would be the one to do it? The county? Who would be the one to have authority to replace us?
Dissolving the district, LAPCO has the authority to do that.
Well, not dissolve it, we don't need to dissolve it because if we dissolve it, we got issues. Maybe it will not lose it, it will lose its license. Back in 2005, that was going to be the problem of the...
And the county has committed that if for some reason, you know, the hospital, you know, they're operating on days of catch, if they run out of catch, that the county's going to step in, E M D's going to step in and keep the doors open so that that hospital, you know, doesn't have even more issues being created from closing. Um, in turn, so LAPCO would dissolve the district if that's the path that is taken. I believe that our supervisor, Manuel Perez, has the ability to, um, reappoint members to serve on that board.
Well, I'd like to know what I'm saying this whole way, preaching it.
Right. Well, let me say, let me say something, I was on the hospital board for 10 years.
Sam, can you, just my little more, are you...
Can you hear me now? All right. Let me put it on loud. I was on the hospital board for 10 years. And there's some things that, that might take place if you dissolve the district, that things are grandfathered in, such as the building, the size of model of the building. And you shut everything down, now everything has to come to the code and we're done. So, we have to be careful that that's just could be something one of the little things. And I haven't been on it in six, seven years. But I'm just saying, both are, it's easy to say, shut it down, get rid of this, do that. But we have to be a little bit more strategic in what we're doing. And, and I agree, we are in a hole and we're in dire straits and we need it, but we have to be careful. And I think that's why it's good we have these meetings to talk about it, but if you shut it down, there could be, there could be something that say, hey, can't reopen a building.
Nobody is saying shutting down is any part of the equation. That hospital has to remain open.
I'm talking about district, if you close the district.
Option says consolidate, that's what's recommended, consolidate and just call care district. Don't do both recommendations. But I think, well, I should, I know, uh, county supervisor, uh, some of the directors who I've spoken to, and, uh, county CEO knew that they cannot close, knew that those doors can't be shut, operators stopped for any reason. That's why the city manager stated that, uh, they would fund it, wouldn't necessarily keep that, keep that open, not, not to, uh, not to break the break other than changing the administration.
There's the option of resigning. They could all individually resign from the board, we could install some, or the supervisor could install some temporary board members in the interim while we work through these options with the county, with the state, and with, with LAPCO. So, it wouldn't necessarily have to be that we have them, you know, forced out by the supervisor or recalled that they could voluntarily resign and allow us to go down this path to right the ship for the Calabriti Healthcare District.
That's, that is true.
And going back and doing some homework, back, back in 2005, 2006, that's what this box is right here. I've saved all the records and all the different things of what went on, on. And there was the Blue Ribbon Committee formed, brought it up to Sam, and Sam was on that, the Blue Ribbon Committee back in the day. And what triggered some of this is the state passed a bill or certain things that when hospitals leased out back in the day, that they had to change some things and go back to the district, otherwise they would have issues. So, that's why Graham and the hospital district decided to, they turned, wanted to go ahead and terminate the contract. Back in the day, they gave, uh, roughly, almost three months notice, they had to give two months notice. They wanted to go ahead and generate, terminated, terminated because of, um, of some issues that, you know, struggled through, but the board was involved back then, come on board, got things moving, and, and that's when, when, uh, the Rita, the city of life stepped up late and gave them some money to loan to them because back then Graham was concerned they could not get their things all paid off and everything. Graham, back then, sold out, which lawyer they did away with the hospital and the hospital board took over, and that next year, they did quite well. Actually, they made two, brought in $2 million and was able to pay off the loan. And I mean, it was amazing how things got back in place to do. But going back and re-reading that, one of the things was the seismic study that was done, had to be done to the hospital. So, in the works back then, was able to find, we did away with the old church building, that don't have to be brought up, the old Dobie building don't have to be brought up, only the one section does. But in reading the past couple of days, that will go away and not go away, but has to be addressed by 2030. It's around the corner. So, that's another issue that's going to be facing that hospital to meet those sort of things. But back in the day, the Blue Ribbon Committee was formed to look at building a new hospital. A lot of stuff went into that, and what basically is when they found out that they could postpone, uh, the seismic things of 2030, they said, okay, well, it's going to stay with the old one, hopefully things get worked out down the road, which basically didn't happen. But the cost, basically, to do the new hospital was going to be about the same cost of retrofit what they had there back in the day. But that was going to be redoing some air conditioning and wiring while they're in there doing a lot of stuff. They actually, the committee and everybody looked together and they looked at, majority wanted to have the hospital put right back there, which they had some property next door, which they could have done it. But actually, they were looking, wanted to move maybe to the freeway back in the day, closer to, right, to the freeway, easier access for ambulance and all that. But that was some of the situations back then, the, the original board back, back in the day, I think it was Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Coppel, I'm just trying to remember the different ones that ran. I think Carmelo was on that board back then, uh, in 2005. But they was able to bring it, you know, bring it back and get things functioning, and they did quite well over the period of time until this stuff started happening now. But this is one of the concerns is that we have some other issues functioning that we have to deal with too, so, but we've got to take it one step at a time, so. So, do we have any other comments, the board? Well, I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment and, uh, try to keep it under three minutes, I guess.
Anything that happened? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City staff, our community here. My name is Melissa Jessup Blackens. Um, I've been pretty involved with attending most of the hospital, top district meetings since January this year when I was asked to start attending them because of the dire straits that people felt that it was in. And not, a lot of people just simply don't understand a lot of the aspects of it. Um, having previously employed the ambulance service, um, why I had a pretty good idea of some of the things that they face. Um, and as, uh, both Sam and the mayor are talking about, um, with regard to some of the past, um, financial, um, items that happened, I remember when captain of the sheriff's department was appointed by the county supervisors to go in and take over one day because it was that bad, and that did happen. And so, there's just so much history and so much that goes into it. Um, I, I want to just hone in on about six items here. Um, on the very end of page, on page 37 of the LAPCO report, option nine, um, it says, chapter nine bankruptcy, clearly this would be a last resort and would not necessarily ever result in restoring the hospital to a fully functioning facility. Additionally, it could result in the hospital closing altogether. This option is the worst-case option and should only be considered if all else fails. Well, unfortunately, that board, um, has made an attempt to, um, already pass a resolution to do so. They are not being transparent about it, they say, um, they have, they're just putting it on paper in case somebody feels that they need to do it, then they have the ability and they've got the resolution done. Well, unfortunately, they did not hold those meetings legally. They had one resolution in the first public hearing, that public... They had one resolution in the first public hearing, that public hearing was adjourned. They added a second resolution to the second time they reopened the meeting, which was not publicly noticed for the initial public hearing. So that is a legal issue with regard to them having even acted in that regard. And secondly, I, I do believe that, um, option nine should not, I spoke openly with regard to not going that route. Whether or not they have, they haven't, we don't know. We honestly, as a community, we don't know if somebody already filed that paperwork. No one knows. Maybe one person at the hospital knows. So that is, um, I agree with LACCO, um, and the executive director on that item. Number two is, um, the funding from emergency versus inpatient, um, hospitalization is vast. Um, I own an ambulance company, nine one one is a wash, emergency room is a wash. Transfers out of town is where you make your bread and butter. Inpatients is where you make your bread and butter in the hospital. Sam, you know this, you sat on that board and, and work on those financials. So, um, without the function of the inpatient portion of the hospital, it's a moot point. Because you, you cannot, um, do you want me to stop now?
No.
No, okay. So it's, it, it has to be functioning as a full hospital in order to, for it to be financially viable. And that's what you talked about, Mr. Mayor, is back in those days, it was, it was functioning. We had upwards of ten inmates down on the floor at a time. Uh, they are, they were all the way down on the very end, down in rooms twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. And, uh, the hospital was full down to twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And then there was a buffer to buffer the inmate population that we have. I am the staff who had a prison closed, however, comma, we can't even offer that as an option right now. So emergency versus inpatient, huge difference in whether you or not you're going to make it. Because just with any emergency room, you are not, period. That's it. And our demographic here does not support any emergency room only with the high medical and Medicare population that we have. Number three, um, both the LACCO report and the city managers' report with, related to the county and state funding. Um, that has been asked for, begged for, whatever, it's not going to happen. There's no trust. If there's no trust and it's been put in writing, that there's no trust with the management and the board there. Who is going to give them money? That it's just, that's all there is to it. It's not going to happen. If it was going to happen and they were going to give them the four million dollars, it would have already happened. But this community and, um, all of our legislators that have been on the phone calls with the healthcare district meeting. What, it's been sad to watch how much, how bad the meetings go. And the congressman and the supervisor, they're all listening and they're hearing everything that goes on in those meetings. I would lend them a dollar. I, it just is, is horrible. Um, you talked about the Blue Ribbon Committee. They also have a healthcare district, um, foundation. There's a foundation for the hospital. Um, I think there's thirty dollars in that account. And has anyone in the last ten years even done anything to try and promote? That we have a foundation that was put in place to assist the hospital when things happen. Um, they've had a couple of times where, um, about a year and a half ago, they had the ability to, um, have a new X-ray machine brought in. They never returned the phone calls. And guess what? A few weeks ago, we didn't have an X-ray machine for over a week. And they were doing CAT scans on everyone in that emergency room at, with the high radiation. We had one mother that turned away and said, no, I am not having my child subjected to that. So we've not just got a financial situation, we've got dire straits where they're, they're doing. Stuff that shouldn't be being done just out of, of their need to try and do something, which is wrong. Um, they have, item number four is that they did, um, apply for, uh, an extension on the distressed hospital loan with, uh, the state. And they did receive an extension on that. Um, I do have in my possession the, all of the documents with, that were the original documents for the loan. That said, this is what we're going to do with the money and this is what we're promising and these are all the things we're going to put in place. Um, I also have a set of the documents that they applied this year, um, for the extension. I have not married those two together yet. My huge, huge, huge concern is the fact that the documents from this year do not match what, um, actually happened. And they do not match what was asked for and received for what they were going to do. If in fact, those documents say that they did all of the things that they applied to and said, then those are incorrect. And the state, if they find that out, why they would have the ability to, um, change their line with regards to the forgiveness or the extension on that. So I'm, I'm extremely concerned about that. I do have the documents. I've not yet had time to look at them. Um, but that is, that's the reason I asked for them was because I want to look at what they said this year. What they said they did with the money and whether or not that's true. I, I believe it's probably not. Um, Mallory, you have a map for me. I have the LACCO map. There it is. So, um, our district, and a lot of people don't understand LACCO or the districts or whatever. They have a bunch of different districts, museums, um, cemetery, I think Suzie's here, she just had her audit. So the red area, um, from the river over to west of Desert Center is the sphere of influence. The red area is the sphere of influence, which the healthcare district, um, they say that is our, kind of our area that we have. That people use our hospital. So it's not the district lines. The district line is just west of where it says life down at the bottom. Our district line is actually there. So our actual healthcare district does not go out to the sphere of influence, west of Desert Center. It actually stops, I think it's commensurate with about where Chukawala and Ironwood are. Um, I've not, I've got a phone call in to, um, the executive director. He hasn't called me back yet. So my thought today was, so, and the line over on the west side, the purple one. That aligns with where our healthcare district meets the Palaver, or the Desert Healthcare District. So that's where the line split is. My question is, there's a little bit of tax increment in between the sphere of influence line. And the black line, which is where our district ends, but we're still serving people all the way out to west of Desert Center. So where is the tax increment? And, and the LACCO report and the city managers' report, both talk about tax increment. So where is the property tax increment outside of the boundary of the district all the way out to the sphere of influence? And especially in light of the amount of solar that has gone in. Now, I know that back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. We argued heavily with the county with regard to the solar tax. All solar projects have to pay a tax on their application to the county and unfortunately, life lost. We, did we even get a dime? I, I don't think we really even got anything, but that's a story for another day. My point is, is why don't we get property tax increment from that line out to our sphere of in, influence? Or at least to Desert Center where some of that solar is. A lot of it is on B L M land, so there's no assessment, but a lot of it has been built on private property. So there's got to be some assessment there and some property taxes being paid. So why are we not asking and begging to have our district line redrawn as part of this? Um, if it's available to, and that's a LACCO item. They draw those lines to, um, help us with regard to the amount of money coming into the healthcare district. Now, each district has their own lines. This is the healthcare district. The museum district is different. The cemetery district's different, all that. This is the healthcare district's lines. So why don't we ask to have our actual district line moved west and gain some more property tax increment from those solar projects? Um, let's see, that's the map.
How west is it?
So this is our current line.
Okay.
So we go from In- Incrio County to San Bernardino County, the river to this line. I think it's about the prisons.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And so from here to Desert Center, how many solar projects are there? Forty, fifty? Maybe, let's just say half of them are on V L M ground. I don't think half of them are, the desert sunlight is, um, on V L M ground, the one up above Desert Center. Um, there's, I think McCoy might be partially on V L M land. But some of those projects are on private property. And so, and they've been purchased and they're making bank on those. I know they've got all their P P A, all their agreements and all that. But we should be able to ask for our line to be redrawn because it's no man, it's no man's land. No one's getting any healthcare district's funding for property taxes from there. Because, um, Desert's not getting it because their line ends over there where our sphere of influence line ends. It's actually probably even west of there. That's just their sphere of influence line. So some, that, some healthcare districts should be getting some of that property tax increment from those solar projects.
And you would think it'd be the district that's closest to servicing those people.
Which is Palaver Healthcare District.
I agree.
Leslie, back in the day, the county made some deals with them.
They sure did.
They made some deals and that's where.
And we lost. And it's time for us to go ask for it again.
We had a couple of things that they made and said it's going to go to their parks to make power and all this kind of stuff. But you're right in the standpoint that, that they made some deals with them solar.
They did. And we really, really, really lost on that whole situation. And I want to say that was in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Um, the first twenty one mega lot up there on the southwest Mesa, uh, was the first project. And, um, I actually worked there. I was the office manager there for that project. And that was during the time when we were, the solar industry was negotiating and it was heavy lobbying. And, um, to what that, how that solar tax was going to go. And we did lose on that. So our community did.
And most communities likely did have no say because we're in the city limits. That's all we can pretty much talk about, city limits.
But the county didn't take care of us either. Um, lastly, um, I, I hear what, um, Councilman Burton is saying with regard to the characteristics of the board members. And that's a tough, tough gig and who is qualified, right? Um, there are a couple of people in town that are interested in serving on that board. Um, one of them has previous healthcare district board, um, experience and is a, um, has a doctorate. And, uh, works in this community and, uh, it was not at this healthcare district, obviously. And, uh, there are a few other obvious, non-biased people in this community that are willing to serve. Yes, they're going to, forgive my language, they're going to inherit a pile of crap. But at the same token, um, I think that the community trust has to be restored. And, um, without that, we're going nowhere.
I agree.
Nowhere, zero, because it's just not happening. I mean, I don't know how many of you have gone to the emergency room in the last five years, uh, because you trust that you're going to get good care. Um, so that's just, you know, the basic question. And so if you don't or your family doesn't, who does? And it's probably the people that don't have transportation, they don't have the insurance, those kinds of things. So. Um, that's all that I have. I really appreciate your time. I appreciate your energy. I appreciate all of the work everyone is putting in on this. And, um, the leadership, um, I know that somebody's going to get up and speak at LACCO on the twenty fifth. And, um, I truly appreciate everything that everyone is doing. So thank you.
Okay, Leslie. In your opinion, which option you think would be the best option?
So the city manager gave you the option of, um, combination of four and seven with two in the mix. Um, I agree with that. Um, I think that, um, I think we're too far gone. I, I think what Councilman Howie said is correct. The ship has sailed. It sailed a couple of years ago. And, um, and it's sinking fast. And, um, I think that there needs to, it, it either needs to be leased out. Or, um, there needs to be a completely new ward with a new management firm in there. And, um, again, we've got to get the, the, uh, inpatient beds built. That's, they're going nowhere without that.
That is a bit.
And no one is going to lend them money. Even the county hasn't come forward with anything. This is their county. This is Supervisor Perez's county.
They need a fresh slate and I know that they probably have some bad contracts and different things that need to probably be terminated and renegotiated. Their billing. I mean, I, I'll tell you right now, that's going to seem giddy business when you bill ten months after service is rendered or whatever it may be. Or just don't bill at all. I mean, well, how do you make money if you don't bill?
I agree. Um, I, I don't think that they're going to, they're not going to get financing. They can barely open their bank account, honestly. Because the credibility isn't there. Um, they're trying, they're trying to, believe me, the staff over there, um, they're really trying. But it's, it's just too far gone. And, um, it's, it's very sad, but at the same token, you know, we do need that service in our community. And, um, so, and we all know that, you know, that's, that's for our conclusion. So, but thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie. You cleared the room for me to talk a lot. Dr. Savo, Chief of Staff at Palaver Hospital. First of all, um, Joey, I, I agree with you. If any board member cared, they would be here. They should have had a special meeting to discuss LACCO finding before this board, this city council meeting. So they could come up with their opinion offered to you. Doctor Brooks for, I'm not defending anybody, but I'm just telling you of the camps. I know Sandy had an, an emergency she had to go to Palm Springs. But Doctor Brooks told me that he wanted to attend the meeting. And he told me to, um, let him know this afternoon, but I ended up going, cutting some, uh, day trees and I forgot to call him. He wanted to come at his age, at all the mia, he cared enough to want it to come know what's going on.
And I, I'm very fond of Doctor Brooks, you know, but I also know, you know, it's just.
I agree with you.
It's, it's, you know, the game is passing by, you know, it's okay.
Absolutely.
It's not, no disrespect to him, he's a great man.
But I'll, I'll tell you guys, first of all, I, um, I think LACCO should have come talk to the chief of staff at the hospital. I know the business model very, and I never spoke to them, nobody asked me. The hospital should have spoken to me before they caused a surgery or anything else. They never did. They have not consulted me on the issues related to medical stats. They should have had me on backup committee with Johnny and others. They didn't. Why? Because they just don't want anybody to know what's going on because they know they screwed up. Okay? They know that. I have questioned this board for the last three, four years, okay, especially since two thousand twenty two. When they came and they said that they got five hundred thousand dollar grant and they're building a modular clinic for a million dollar at that time. I said, why would you spend a million dollar on that? The county wanted to sell that building for a million dollar, a beautiful building across the hospital where Dr. Badri is and I used to live. They had no answer. And their answer is always, nobody else. You don't know shit and we know everything. That's always it. They just talk and talk, no action. So I backed off and that building project became two and a half million dollar. And it would have been more if Sandy didn't get involved with Joe Barrow, Jim Barrow getting involved so they could cut costs. They don't understand the business model. So I'm going to give you just a little bit of education. The business, first of all, and another thing is about the board members before I get the business model. The board members don't have to have a T H D, don't have to be doctors, don't have to be experienced. The board members have to have one thing, conscience. They have to have ethics and conscience. They have to know that. When things are not working well, let me resign, get the hell out of here because I can't fix it. They keep saying that we did nothing wrong. What if you did nothing wrong? And the hospital is just about to close its door? Well, then resign for God's sake. Let somebody else get in. Maybe they have some idea, maybe they don't. Okay? They don't. They, they just have no clue. You know, I call the goat chimp, the idiot. I really don't mean insult by calling them idiot. Idiot means they know, they are clueless. They have no idea. You know, for example, this is the city council, has nothing to do with the hospital. They were questioning, how much money do we get for a special assessment and all that? And Mallory correctly says about three, it's two hundred seventy thousand dollar. And I know that it was about eighty thousand, eighty five thousand dollar when I started in twenty, uh, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety eight. So it has gone up a little bit. That's not enough to save a hospital. This hospital is not going to survive. And business, until somebody gets there and understands the business model. The hospital board has one employee and that's the C E O. The problem was this hospital in the last two, three years. We have multiple different heads that tell, one goes fire that guy, one fires that guy, one, we have multiple lawsuits. They right hand doesn't talk to the left hand. They kick this guy in that guy up. No reason, no discussion. They fire, they not fire, they cancel the physician contract. Even though I told them, he didn't. Even though I told them, he did nothing wrong, they didn't care. Then they went and got somebody else, that they screwed up a lot more, they don't care. When they get personal, their personal agenda gets in the way of what is best for this government. I've had plenty of personal agenda, but I don't let it get into my way of running the hospital or what's best for this hospital or what's best for this community. They don't understand it. They cannot get that settled. Um, the business model of this hospital is very simple. Very simple. If you want that hospital to survive, you need patients. That's all you need. The census, as Leslie said, was about fifteen, seventeen, twenty, two thousand seven, two thousand eight. When the hospital changed hand from the district, from the lease to district. It was nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand when I met. The first time I met the district of Linda Wise, Joe, I'm sorry, I forgot, Linda Wise and who's the lady who was on the city council in the back with the red hair, I forgot her name. Doris Morgan and Floyd Barrow and they were some of them. And I tell them, guys, you're the board of this hospital, I have a problem with the management, can you fix it? They said, no, all we do is we have one meeting every summer. We sign off this check for eighty-five thousand dollar, that's why it's stuck, it's in my mind. And we'll give it to the hospital, that's all we do. We get the money from the county, we give it to the hospital and we don't do anything. I said, no, you're the board of the hospital. No, they wouldn't understand it. So we had to get Dr. Brooks, Dr. Lucero and I, with Derek Hopple to run and Ramon, sorry. Ramon Echeverria got on the board of the hospital, they took over, we went to court and became the district hospital. My hope was, if it's the people from the town, they care more than a big corporation, how wrong that was. Because the people of this town, unfortunately, they get so quickly opinionated. If you sit on the council and they don't like you, fifty percent hate you, fifty percent like you and you lose business. So people who really care, don't wanna get in the hospital board, don't wanna get on that city council, don't get on the college board. Because they lose, there is no upside about it. But it's doable. One is, you, five, should have gone and you still should go, how could that be three of? The three amigos I'm calling, or three stooges, whatever you call them, that they are, they think that they know what they're doing and all they do Carmella doesn't even know how to run a meeting, for God's sake. The attorney's is there. Every time she wants to say something, she turns, the attorney says, no, don't do that, or do this, or do that. Oh, if you can't run a meeting, that's the minimum requirement to be sitting on that board. Don't. When I broke bond with them was in last year, December or November, when the election was. You know, Dr. Brooks has been here, he's the only one, by the way. Sandy also did some, um, some four H animal, got to the hospital, some donation. But the, the only person that got twenty thousand dollar donation to the hospital board was Dr. Brooks. I have done a lot against my own opinion for Dr. Brooks because I respect his opinion. He's older, he's past his prime, but I have tremendous respect for him. If he says, Dr. Solway, do it this way or don't do it this way, I listen. So in that board meeting, the, the trio, Carmella, Trina and Rosie, they totally ignored what Dr. Brooks wanted for a good six hundred, you know, agenda. They completely threw him out. And what they did is, they put a chair of the board, which is like Joey DeConne. And to become also the treasury of the board, which has never been done before. Right then I knew that they don't want anybody to know who signs the chair.
Dr. Solway?
Yep.
We, we know we got a lot of issues with everything, so.
I'm sorry, I'll get there, I'll get quickly.
My point is here, in your opinion, what would be the best option?
I said that, like you said, I think that's your only option. And I'll tell you one.
Okay, I'm just, this.
Yeah, no problem. My, my, I, I, I believe, I, I think Mallory did a great analysis. But again, she didn't talk to me, so I have to give my side to say why. I was here during the time when in July, the budget wouldn't pass, state wouldn't send the money. So we couldn't pay, the pay chase would have to stay for two, three months, we couldn't pay people. Because the state wouldn't send the money. We couldn't get Medicare, Medicaid, that's sixty, seventy percent of our income come from Medicare, Medicaid, we would go broke. So if you rely on county or state to pay for this hospital a million dollar a year, that's wrong for two reasons. Number one, they're wasting. Number, number two, I don't know who said it, maybe Johnny said it, I don't trust these three to run the board anyways. I mean, there's a recall going on and I think it will be successful. But you guys need to talk to state, resign before they recall so we can save the hospital. We don't have time, you know?
Dr. Solway, we're gonna try to move forward here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Well, I thank all of you for the work you've done on this because this is kind of a long haul for all of us. Um, I agree with what Mallory said, four, two and seven are about our only options. Uh, she's researched this, it's, and she's come up with good numbers and she's, she just presented it in such a good manner that I think even if you get to go out and rally on the twenty-fifth, you ought to stand up and tell him how you feel. Because what she presented us tonight is an excellent options that we can, can come up with. And I agree, the board has to go in order for us to get any money off of option two at all to uh, get a solvency to this district. It's not a personality issue, it's a financial issue and it's a life threatening issue. If we don't have a hospital as a community, we're a dead community. And we've got enough problems without losing our hospital and losing what businesses we have. And I appreciate everyone of you for all the work you've done. And Leslie, my God, the girl is so smart, she scares me to death sometimes. But she knows her business, she really does. And I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate all of you and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And so there's no other public comment? Okay, we move on. Johnny, in your conversation with Desert Healthcare, are they very interested or anything, any, any movement there?
In the one committee that I was on, uh, the Desert, the healthcare committee of the three county organized. There was one representative from Desert Healthcare there, he made a statement that he would take, they would need, basically need the money to do it. They didn't seem to sound too excited about it, I think they'd wait for the county at that time to see what they would offer. The county, there was no top county guy there or lady there to make that work, say yes or no. But he said, he was very clear that would be a condition if, if that was to be, uh, to go forward.
And reading the LACCO report, giving a comment for three hospitals, the county funds or does something?
There is three healthcare districts. San Antonio, Calverti and Desert Healthcare. Which is the, the master of the three because it's, it's a, Desert Regional, Eisenhower, JFK, so very three largest hospitals on our side of the county are in Desert Healthcare.
I know back in the day, BRIM was the one that had this hospital and they decided to get out of California because of some issues happened with the state. Uh, but they're, I never bought out by LifePoint. And doing some homework, LifePoint has ninety-four hospitals across the United States now. So I, you know, it looks like they've been very successful in whatever they do, but I don't know the business. But, you know, me, I believe they have three, four in California now. It was supposed to be LifePoint and right now has ninety-four hospitals. They do. And I'm not saying that I want them, but we need to do some research. We don't even need to open this up. Maybe they're aware of us, our situation. Uh, you know, maybe they don't even wanna step up to the plate, but I'm just using that for example. You know, I don't have a problem, but I think that's a critical thing we need to do now. Is be able to contact the hospitals willing to step up to the plate. They know all the rules, they know what you gotta do and, and all that, you know. But having the board, you could have a functioning board too to steer them, you know, not so much steer them in the right direction, but but all the board members, some things don't understand a lot of stuff. And we, all of us, we don't understand. Those are the homework of Leslie and different ones, so. Everybody that's worked hard on this, so.
Okay, so we're here tonight, so what options do we want to move forward with?
I'm moving those county recommendations, choose four and seven.
Could we open that up to, uh, maybe Desert, Desert Healthcare does not wanna be involved, we open that up to any?
Maybe any of me, I would say so. I think that's what the county would probably ultimately look for.
You know what I'm trying to say, is it? Leslie has a question.
Mr. Mayor, um, I think that probably the reason that LACCO did that is because it's the adjacent healthcare district. And I know that the San Antonio Healthcare District is probably not as uh, financially stable as San Ber- that Desert Healthcare District is much more stable than San Antonio. San Antonio in the past area have always had issues. A high mal health issue there, Medi-Cal, a, a lot of the same situations we've always had. So it's probably just because it's adjacent and more financially stable.
Have you done any homework to LifePoint, or know anything about LifePoint?
No, sir.
So what I'm just asking is, you know, if we go ahead and move forward with this, we, strictly with Desert Healthcare District? Or can we leave that open to any district?
Well, that's part number four, lease the hospital to a public hospital or private hospital system.
I just wanna make sure that we cover our good patients.
And yes, these are LACCO recommendations. Obviously, this is our recommendation to LACCO, so it is a little bit more open-ended, that this is our opportunity to tell LACCO what we think, you know, about the report, about the recommendations and what we feel is the best path forward, just based on living, working in the community, knowing, you know, LACCO, they had all the documents, but they didn't come out and talk to the public. They, they didn't, you know, go to a hospital board meeting, and I'm aware of it. So this is adding a community voice to their report.
I do know, like today's a letter, and reading the LACCO thing, it says if the, if we get our package to them by September sixteenth, they will go out directly to their board members before the meeting.
Yes, it'll be included in the agenda packet.
Yes, and I think that's very important to, you know, what I'm trying to say is board members are better educated until waiting till the last minute at the board meeting, so there's no question, so. Yes, that's.
Mr. Mayor, um, and Mallory, I don't know if you know this, but um, the executive director of LACCO and two of their members have been attending a Zoom portion or the online portion of a couple of the healthcare district meetings. I've seen their um, names on the list of people that are on those meetings. So that was part of what I said earlier, that some of them have been attending. And so, there have been representatives from LACCO on some of those uh, meetings.
To include the supervisor of staff, Pedro's been on all the meetings of the hospitals.
And the mayor of La Quinta.
Who's, who's the director of LACCO.
Like, I, you know, I also contacted LACCO and when they made that decision, they emailed me to, right away, which I thought was very good of them to, you know, to get that and then it was just probably a little bit later than I would have sent it out. Had an hour or two to, you know, look at it a little bit, I'm just saying, it was very good of them to send it out. So, so basically, the motion is for option two, four and seven, correct?
And there's a motion and a second. So we, we need to entertain a vote, or the motion will fail.
Okay. Uh, but when I'm, when I'm getting back, it will still be open to any district that vote. Any other one decides Desert Healthcare wants to step up, is correct, right? So we don't have a problem with this coming back. Yes, Dr. Solway?
Um, just, I, just wanted to mention, I think that uh, four, two, four, seven that you mentioned, I like option seven and I'll tell you the reason why. Any other hospital, any other company like LifePoint, there isn't LifePoint left because they couldn't make money. But if they come back in, they have to make money, they are a for-profit organization. If they don't have enough patients or if they don't have, if they draw a population, it won't work. I think that if you can make it with option seven, with the desert district, if you can combine those two districts, if they agree with that, I think that's your best option to keep the hospital survive through all the problem if the state funding doesn't control that. And also it benefits them because just like now, JFK and I, and Desert Hospital are the district hospital for Desert uh, district. So JFK sends patients to Desert Hospital and Desert Hospital provides some physician and some comfort for a bit. But for JFK, it's just a symbolic relationship. And that would benefit them if we had a relationship with them so that we can send our patient, one of the biggest problems here is psych help, inner care and the other, they send a patient to Long Island or other places. So if we can get option seven and discuss it in LACCO with other desert district, then it can also benefit you. Maybe it's easier sell to them rather than just selling a broke hospital.
Yes, but where I get that, Doc, so I don't have a problem with Desert Healthcare. Let's say they decide they don't want to for a reason, we have to have another option two.
Again.
And you never know, tomorrow somebody might step up to play, what do you think about it?
It's, it's just like when they close down Rite, they're not making money, they close down, nobody bought it. Because they're not making money, Rite can make money, go other one. So if Desert Hospital can, the private companies won't come in to lease it unless they wanna take our money like a fool and walk away. Because if they don't make money, there's no incentive for them to come. So we, we have to change that business model or have a repair of with Desert Hospital.
Okay, got a motion, uh, a second? Everybody in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Okay. And I think there's one other thing you wanted, somebody's spokesman?
Yes, although um, we will include, or make a comment by the sixteenth, I would include it in the agenda packet. I feel that we should also make public comment during the hearing. So I don't know if you want to appoint a city spokesperson. Um, I believe the vice mayor plans to attend, I plan to attend, I believe Councilman Reagan's plans to attend, I'm not sure else. He was planning to make the trip on the twenty-fifth.
Not a problem, the public's gonna go.
That's fine, we're riding separate vehicles, but it is a notice meeting of the public, so more than three people can't be there because it is a public meeting.
And it's a public hearing.
Yes, but I'm just.
It's a public hearing.
I don't want Mallory to get on my case, you know what I mean? I, I would, uh, my suggestion would be our vice mayor be the spokesperson, he's been in the middle of this from the jump on the ad hoc committee, he's spent a lot of time with, you know, the county folks. And uh, he, he's got a, you know, he's full verse in and he's already going, so that, that's just me, I would like you to do it.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that's good. And Mallory's going too, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if he misses something, you can cover the bases.
Mallory agreed ultimately.
Are you okay with that, Johnny?
Yeah.
Okay. Any public comment on it?
Public comment is closed.
Well, I know, but this is separate, another thing I'm bringing up.
Um, no, it's all part of the same item, so public comment's closed.
I think it's great, Johnny was really involved in Sam, so. Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay, I guess our, I need to open up a public comment?
No, not on his special meeting.
A public comment, although that on special meeting, I have told me, which I already did, correct?
Yes.
The next meeting, our next regular meeting will be October fourteenth at six o'clock, see you.